Call to order. Let's all stand for the flag, sir. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the God for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's our reorganization meeting, and we have some new members that are going to get this morning now.
Mr. Conti? Corbo? Counselor Cazarelli? We're going to hold people by. Oh, yeah. Okay. Hold. Everybody kind of close by. This is a man swearing in. Left hand on the Bible, please. That's it. Right hand up. Everybody ready? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Gerard Corbo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
To the governments established in the United States.
To the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Gerard Corbo.
Do further solemn swear.
Do further solemn swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of planning board.
Of the office of planning board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Ex-Brian Banda? Family? You guys are going to assist in pulling the Bible. Turn around. Yep, you're good. Brian, left hand up. Left hand down, right hand up. Ready? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brian Banda.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brian Banda.
Do further solemn swear.
Do further solemn swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of planning board.
Of the office of planning board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Are you going to need this card?
No, she hasn't.
Mark?
No.
Is he?
No, he was.
Yeah, he's not a, he's a. He's a. All other. You know what? She should probably swear me. That's why I can.
Aye, see who you are.
Aye, Michael Melham.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Gerard Corbo.
Do further solemn swear.
Do further solemn swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of planning board.
Of the office of planning board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations, sir. Ex-Brian Banda? Family? You guys are going to assist in pulling the Bible. Turn around. Yep, you're good. Brian, left hand up. Left hand down, right hand up. Ready? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brian Banda.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Rose Tobeto.
Do further solemn swear.
Do further solemn swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the planning board attorney.
Of the planning board attorney.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, would someone like to make a nomination for chairman?
I'd like to make a nomination to, for Ray Venero to be nominated as chairman.
Second.
There's any other nominations?
Second.
There's no more nominations. Lois, could you call the roll, as we don't have a secretary right now?
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Donna Rico?
Yes.
Martin Sinabria?
Yes.
Gerard Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. De La Lanza?
No.
All right, you're done.
Would someone like to make a nomination for recording secretary? I'd like to nominate Corinne D'Angelo.
Second.
Is there any other nominations for recording secretary? If not, Lois, can you call the roll?
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
And Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Rose Tobeto.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
To the governments established in the United States.
And the, to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Rose Tobeto.
Do further solemn swear.
Do further solemn swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
For planning board attorney.
For planning board attorney.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to nominate Andrew Conti for vice chairman.
Second.
Is there any other nominations? There's no more nominations. Corinne, please call the roll.
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
And Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Rose Tobeto.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Michael Melham.
Do further solemn swear.
Do further solemn swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Of planning board.
Of planning board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
At this time, would someone like to make a nomination for chairman?
I'd like to make a nomination to, for Ray Venero to be nominated as chairman.
Second. There's any other nominations?
Second.
There's no more nominations. Lois, could you call the roll, as we don't have a secretary right now?
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
At this time, would someone like to make a nomination for chairman?
I'd like to make a nomination to, for Ray Venero to be nominated as chairman.
Second. There's any other nominations?
Second.
There's no more nominations. Lois, could you call the roll, as we don't have a secretary right now?
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
At this time, would someone like to make a nomination for attorney of Rose Tobeto?
Second.
Is there any other nominations? There's no more nominations. Corinne, please call the roll.
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
And Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
At this time, we take nomination for secretary of the planning board. I'd like to nominate Gerald Walsh.
Second.
Is there any other nominations for attorney? If not, Lois, could you call the roll?
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
And Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
At this time, would someone like to make a nomination for attorney of Rose Tobeto?
Second.
Is there any other nominations for attorney? If not, Corinne, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
At this time, would someone like to make a nomination for attorney of Rose Tobeto?
Second.
Is there any other nominations for attorney? If not, Corinne, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
And Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
At this time, would someone like to make a nomination for attorney of Rose Tobeto?
Second.
Is there any other nominations? There's no more nominations. Corinne, please call the roll.
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
At this time, we take nomination for secretary of the planning board. I'd like to nominate Gerald Walsh.
Second.
Is there any other nominations? There's no more nominations. Corinne, please call the roll.
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
At this time, court reporter, I would like to nominate Michelle Quick. Is there any other nominations? If there's no more nominations, Corinne, please call the roll.
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Enogorado?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Take no part.
Mr. Gove?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
Mr. Cazarelli?
Take no part.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Take no part.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Chairman's comments. I'd just like to welcome our new members. And old members got in their packet today, or this week, this month, about civil rights litigation, and the town is going to be offering us some training to make us better prepared and better trained. So you'll be getting our guides shortly. Correspondence and payment of bills. Any questions or comments? At this time, we're going to take a brief, three to four minute recess, and before we take another page. Corinne, can you read the status certification of our meeting?
It has been advertised according to Sunshine Law.
Thank you. New business. We have an application before the board. It's PV 2018-03, 54-58 Florence Avenue. Minor subdivision to convert a one-family into a two-family, into a two-family and proposing a new two-family building. I will refuse myself as I have a conflict with Mr. Conti.
I am, sir.
Should I proceed?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, I want to congratulate all of the new members. Also, I want to compliment everybody in tremendous turnout today. Pleased to see you in turnout today. Counsel's name, for people who don't know, is Robert Cassiello, the permanent Cassiello of Macau, 524 Union Avenue in Bellevue. I represent the applicant in this matter, Pedro Marciella Verrezweza. My clients are seeking a minor subdivision approval in order to subdivide block 1401, Lot 15, into two new lots, which would be known as Block 1401 Lots, and Lot 1401, Lots 1501 and 1502, should this be approved. The property currently contains a one-family home, and if the minor subdivision is approved, my client plans to erect a two-family on each of the lots. They'll be using the existing structure and demolishing some of the existing structure on, that's on the lot. The proposed two families are permitted uses in the zone, but a number of bulk variances are required. The witnesses you'll hear from tonight are the applicant, Pedro Verrezweza, the architect, Dan Roma, and the engineer slash planner, Anthony Marucci. I'd like to call Mr. Verrezweza as my first witness.
Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and the truth to help you God? Say your name and spell your last name.
Pedro Verrezweza. P-E-V-R-O. B-E-R-R-E-D-U-E-T-A.
Thank you.
Mr. Verrezweza, where do you live?
I live at 58 Florence Avenue.
And do you own that property?
Yes.
And for how long have you owned that property?
Eight years.
And could you briefly explain to the board what it is you are seeking approval to do?
The idea is to subdivide the property, not part of the existing house and convert it to one, I'm sorry, convert it to two-family house. And I will live in the first apartment, the second will live my aunt, and the other two units will be rented.
And the ones you will live in are the new building or the building that's being converted?
The new building.
I have no further questions in this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness? See? Anybody? Are we going to take questions from the public as per witness? Are we going to do it in a bunch?
Do the witnesses first and then you take them?
Usually, per witness has been the procedure.
Let's go back and forth. Yeah, let's let you have your next witness.
I have two experts. I'll call my expert next.
Absolutely.
Okay? Mr. Roma.
Sir, please, right here. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and the truth to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
My name is Daniel Angelo Roma. R-O-M-A.
Mr. Roma, what's your business stress?
My business stress is 877 Broad Street, Newark, New Jersey.
And your occupation?
I'm a professional architect.
This is a push-up.
That's right.
Or did it was here?
Yeah, push it that way. And, Mr. Chairman, should we mark this as A1 because it's marked up a little bit? Mr. Roma, proceed with describing the existing structure on the site.
Yes, this is the first page where I have a survey of the property and I have existing condition of the existing one-family dwelling that is located at the site. As you can see to the left, this is the one-family house that is at the site. We are four feet from property line in the front yard and we have two feet eight inches from the side yard. What we are planning to do is we're going to demolish a portion of the existing one-family dwelling and we're going to create an addition in the back of the existing structure. You see here, at the present time, he has a basement. In the basement has a full bathroom, a room, and a play area. Part of this application will make the basement remove the full bathroom and have only a half bathroom and open the area and it will be used only for laundry and a playroom. You can see here the existing condition, the yellow. This was an addition that was done probably eight years ago to this one-family and that's the portion of the house that is going to be removed.
If this application is approved, how many rooms will there be on the first floor?
Page 8100 that you have on your set is the layout of the proposed new two-family that is going to be built to the left of the property. As you can see, first, to the left, we have the basement floor plan. On the basement, we show a laundry area, a powder room, mechanical room, and the stairs that is connecting with the first floor where we have our first apartment. The addition that we're going to create to make the house bigger, we are not going to provide any basement, it will be a crawl space. On the second drawing, you will see the first floor plan. The first floor plan is a total of 1,221 square feet. The idea is you come in from the front and this is a two-family that will have two separate entrances. As soon as you get in from these four steps, you have a landing and you have a door to the left and a door straight to the second floor. If you go on the first floor, we have a combination of living, dining, and kitchen area, all open space. And behind the kitchen, we have a bathroom that will be used for the living and for the two bedrooms that we have across of the bathroom. And in the back, we have the master bedroom. The master bedroom will have a master bathroom and a walk-in closet. The size of the bedrooms are, the master bedroom will be 13 feet one inch by 12 feet. That will have a bathroom eight feet by five six and a walk-in closet eight feet by six two. The other two bedrooms are going to be 11 feet by nine feet eight inches. Each bedroom will have their own closet. This, again, the total square feet of this floor is 1,221 square feet. From this first floor, we can see next to the two closets after we get in, we have stairs connecting to the basement. And that's the only connection with the basement. Basement doesn't have any outside connection that on this picture.
Is the second floor basically similar to the first floor, just slightly different in square footage?
That's correct.
And did you have a set of pictures showing the existing conditions?
Yes.
And can we mark this as A2 before you start, Mr. Roma?
Yes, here you can see the first three pictures on the top are the house. This is 60 Florence Avenue that is to the left. Then you can see the one-story building. And on the second picture, you see the part that goes to the front and then the entrance to the one-family that is around 20, 25 feet back and a driveway. And this is the house that is to the right of the property. What we're doing is we're demolishing this that is in the middle and we're building these two new houses. This is an addition in the back and an addition on the second floor. And this will be a brand-new two-family. I destroyed the house 58, 54. Now, this is 54. The other house that is going to be a brand-new.
And that's a document that's been submitted to the board, the one you just put up, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And can you just briefly review that proposed second two-family home?
Yes, these two-family homes will be 22 feet wide by 58 feet two inches. We're proposing here, again, we're proposing a basement. This would be a full basement with a storage areas in the back and a recreation area in the front. We have a bathroom. And this will not have any entrance other than the one that is connecting with the first floor. On the first floor, we're going to have the same situation of the other house, entrance and two doors, one in this case to the right and one straight to the second floor. Living and kitchen area combined in the front of the house and then three bedrooms, two bathrooms, walk-in closet, and again, the connection with the basement. On the second floor, what we have is a similar situation, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, walk-in closet, utility room, washer and dryer for the tenant, and a combination of kitchen and dining area in the front of the house.
Mr. Roma, could you go back to the elevations and just point out to the board what the front of the building will look like and the differential, the difference between the two buildings to distinguish them?
Yes, as you can see, one, the one, the 58 that is to the left, is a newer one. That is 24 feet eight inches and have some character. And we decided to have the front and then we have a step back where we have the stairs and it's a step back farther. We decide to have on the bottom with stone and we have a vinyl siding with ASIC or stack up in the front. We have three windows facing the living room. And the other house on the right, we're going to have a bay window to make it nicer, the same idea but with a different treatment, the windows. And also on the bottom is stone and the rest will be siding and will be two different colors.
And no further questions in this witness, Mr. Chairman?
Anybody on board have a question?
Yes. All those nice trees, are they going to be replaced?
The trees that are in the front, I believe that we can remain at the site. The trees that are inside, they will be removed, a new landscaping will be black.
I'm looking at your T100 drawing. In the first and the second box, you say the total stories are two.
This page?
Yeah, okay. The middle box is the first and the second. You say the total stories are two.
Two stories.
But then you say there's the first floor, second floor.
And a basement.
And a basement. And then in the below box, you say there's a basement, first floor, second floor, and that, which is three floors. And to the right, you're saying you're only proposing a two-and-a-half story prime building. Is it two, three, or two-and-a-half? Show me the numbers.
Two-and-a-half, it's a two-and-a-half story. It's a basement that is around, it's three feet above grade and then there is a first floor and a second floor. Originally, before, yeah, before this meeting, there were other drawings showing attic space with some space, a recreation area on that alley. We postponed the case like two months ago and because we revised the drawings, I would remove totally the attic. These houses will not have any attic. The attic will be used only for the HVAC unit in the attic, just to be the...
My speculation, Mr. Walsh, is that inadvertently, when the plans were revised, the architect did not remove the reference to an attic. There is no attic, there's no access to an attic. The only way to get up there would be through a drop ladder. That's it, pull down ladder.
No, I have the drawings where the attic space was removed, but the total roof height has not been changed, which means the total attic space is still there.
The architect would have testified to that. I thought it was changed.
No, no, the look, we want to have the same slope and that's why it was not changed. The, I think it's 10 and 12, the slope of the roof, there was no change. If we can very easy, if it's a condition, we can reduce the slope of the roof of maybe a 612 or 712. Right now, it's 1012 the pitch. That looks nicer on the facade, having almost a 45 degree. If you have 12 and 12, you have 45 degree. Now we have 10 and 12, it's a little less than 45. If it's a condition, we can go lower, maybe 12 and 6 or 12 and 7. But right now, we on the picture, we're showing 10 and 12. But it's not planning to have any attic space for storage or use.
I have a question. In this meeting here, what made you change your mind to take off the attic and even want to lower it?
He changed his mind based on the recommendations of the consultant planner and engineer and that's why the attic space was removed. Now, I guess for aesthetics, he's left it looking that way. But there is no attic space, there's no plan to use attic space, and there's no access to the attic, except again, through a drop door that you might have a ladder on to put something up there and put the air conditioning unit or something like that up there.
And I just wondered, you know, from having an attic to not having an attic, in one meaning, does it seem weird?
Well, it was the recommendation of the engineer, and I have to admit my recommendation, that an attic wouldn't be necessary in this kind of a house, just a two-family house. And the only thing in the attic area might be the air conditioning or, I'm not very sophisticated, air conditioning unit, I assume. Is that correct, Mr. Roma?
Yes, and some storage, you can use for some storage. But on the previous drawings showed dormers and windows and living space. Now it's not living space.
Any other questions?
Will we able to answer questions on course or is that...
The engineer will be discussing that.
I was just gonna, if it's gonna lower the roof pitch for the attic, it should remove any windows because also it's not where you can guarantee it will be a lot of space.
If it's a condition, sure.
Yeah.
No objection.
How about listing it as on the finished face on the drawings? This is the attic as on finished face on the drawings.
Yeah, you can do that. You can do that, you can make it a condition. If you guys want to approve, you can make it a condition. There is no plan to have any use of the attic except for the air conditioning or maybe some smaller storage. Any condition the board wants to make with regard to that would be acceptable should this be approved. And if the slope of the roof has to be changed, I just think aesthetically, it's probably looking nice the way it is. But board's concerned about usage of the attic, my client does not mind changing the slope of the roof.
Just for the record, there's no outside entrance to the basement.
There is not, absolutely not. Mr. Roma will testify, he did say that. Dan Roma, is it correct, there's no access to the basement except from the first floor, is that correct?
That's correct. There's only one stair, some's the new.
And both buildings.
Both buildings.
Anyone else?
I have no further questions in this witness. Mr. Marucci.
Please write your ready answer. Do you swear to God that you're the truth and not the lie?
I do.
Say your name.
Anthony Marucci, M-A-R-U-C-C-I.
Your business address, Mr. Marucci?
116 Whippany Road, Whippany, New Jersey.
Your occupation?
I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor, and professional tenant in the state of New Jersey.
How long practicing in the field of engineering and planning?
Almost 40 years.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, Mr. Marucci.
So he's accepted both as an engineer and a planner?
Thanks.
Did you prepare the engineering site plan for the proposed two-two family?
Yes, my role in this project was too tall. We prepared the drainage and drainage plan for the site and then I was asked to do the planning testing.
And was the subdivision plan approved by you and originally prepared by Mr. Prodesti?
The subdivision plan was prepared by Mr. Prodesti and I reviewed it. It's acceptable and satisfactory for this application.
And what is the zoning at the site?
RC multifamily.
And can you please review the location of the property?
Property is located at 5458 Florence Avenue. It's block 1401, lot 15.
And would you describe the existing site?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, perhaps. Chairman and Mr. Vassio, I have some photographs and a drawing that I prepared that I'd like to use as I testify.
We'll mark that as a group of A1, of A3. Sorry about that. Rose Walsh? Mr. Chairman? Oh, you guys, Matt? I think everybody's got, you can proceed.
If I may, first let me flip over to the photographs. Photograph number one is the subject property. By the way, I took these photographs approximately a month and a half ago in preparation for the prior meeting where we didn't get heard and it got postponed. So they're about a month and a half old. The first photograph is the subject property and you can see that it's kind of an L-shaped one-story house with part of the property that's set back quite a bit and the rest of it is, the original house is closer to the street approximately about four feet setback, but it has a flat roof, the roof pitching towards the back. It's very unusual in aesthetics. Photograph number two is the adjacent house to the north, which is number 60 Florence, and that's a two-family house. And then number 6466 at the north of that. In the other direction, in the southerly direction, on photograph number three, we have number 40 way, actually, we have the first three houses are single-family, but then the fourth house, which is number 40, is a three-family. Photograph number four, number 47-49 is a two-family. On photograph number five, number 53 Florence across the street is a three-family. Number 57 is a two-family. And number 61-63 is a six-family. And on the last photograph, number six, is again, number 61-63, which is a six-family or six-unit. And I also color-coded those houses or properties on the front sheet, which is the tax map, showing the subject property and the houses along Florence on both sides of the street, basically within our 200-foot radius area.
And would you review the current lot configuration and the proposed lot configuration?
The existing property with the existing house has a width of 75 feet and an average depth of, a depth of approximately 110 feet for a lot area of 8,250 square feet. The proposal is to subdivide the property equally with 37.5-foot frontages and lot areas of, lot number 54 would have a lot area of 4,143 square feet and 58 would have a lot area of 4,107 square feet.
The proposed lot configuration, would that do anything with regard to existing trees? And Mr. Walsh was concerned about the landscaping. Can you review that?
Well, in terms of trees, I see an evergreen tree that obviously will probably be removed because of the solid property where that color where the driveway will end up. Other than that, I don't see any trees in front of the property based on the photograph.
Would you review the drainage and discuss any changes to the drainage plan?
That's the plan I put up on the easel. In the existing condition, the drainage right now basically just sheet flows off the property. It flows off the roof, the gutters, the driveway out towards the street, onto the neighboring properties. It's the existing condition. In the proposed condition, should this application be approved, you would have two new houses, one actually being the existing house converted to a two-family and another two-family new with a driveway in the center and a parking area in the rear with four parking spaces on either side, which would meet the parking demand for both two-family houses. And we designed a drainage system where we have a drywall in the rear of the property. All of the drainage from the parking area and the roof area would enter into a drywall piped to another drywall in the front of the property, where the drywalls are designed to actually handle all of the stormwater, but with an overflow, we always have, designed with some type of overflow in the event of an unusual rainstorm. And that overflow would go out to the curb. By designing it this way, there is no drainage that goes onto any neighboring properties. It's all contained on-site.
You started to talk about the parking. Would you review the ingress, egress, and parking for the site and discuss the proposed easement that would probably be needed? May I have Mr. Roma's plan?
Sure. I'm using Mr. Roma's plan because it shows the two houses with a driveway that's actually 20 foot wide, 10 foot on either side of the houses. And then it opens up in the rear, like I said, where you have four parking spaces behind each house. And the parking spaces are designed where a car can back out and pull out frontwards towards the street, so there's never a car that has to back out onto Florence Avenue. All the cars will be able to turn and go out. And the driveway is wide enough so that if a car is entering the site and exiting the site, there's plenty of room. Now, obviously, this does require an easement because this is a subdivision and I know it's in Mr. Harris's report, we would have a cross-easement so that a car from the northerly property can back out onto the southerly driveway in order to get out. And that's basically just a common driveway easement that we would have to create.
And, excuse me, would you review the both violations and the list of variances that are required?
Sure. I know it seems like a lot, but some of these are existing conditions and when I get into the neighborhood character, hopefully it will help the board. Proposed lot 1501, as I said, will have a lot area of 4,143 square feet, where 5,000 square feet is required. It will have a lot width of 37.5 feet, where 50 feet is required. And it will have a front yard of four feet, where 20 feet is required. And also with respect to parking, while we need the parking requirement for the two-family, we're not proposing a garage where your ordinance requires a garage, so it's a variance. And also, the parking is less than five feet from the property line. So these are variances that were brought out in Mr. Harris's report and that's what we're required to request for variances. On lot 15.02, similarly, the lot area is proposed is 4,107 square feet, where 5,000 is required. The lot width again is 37.5, where 50 is required. Now, this is the existing house, so the front yard is 3.9 feet, which is already existing there. That won't change, where 20 is required. The side yard, again, is existing of 2.8 and we're proposing 12.3, where we need, I'm sorry, we're proposing a total of 12.33, where we're required to have five foot on one side and 14 total. And again, with respect to parking, we meet the four spaces, but no garage, and the parking area is less than five feet from the property line. So those are the variances that are being proposed.
Mr. Marucci, would you review the area surrounding the site or basically discuss the surrounding development pattern?
Well, as I try to show in the photographs and I try to show in the handout that I've provided, the character of the area such that it's mixed. You have two families within our 200-foot radius, three families... You have two families within our 200-foot radius, three families, a four-family, and a six-family, as I color-coded on my exhibit. And in addition to that, if you take proposed lot 15.01, where we have a lot area of 4,143 square feet, that comes to 2,071.5 square feet per unit. And lot 15.02 comes to 2,053.5 square feet per unit. And if I go through the lots, they're on that color-coded list. Lot 11, which is a three-family on our side of the street, that three-family, based on the lot size, is 1,666 square feet per unit, which is less than what we're proposing. Lot 36, which is across the street, lot 36, which is also a three-family, that one again, by unit, would be 1,166 square feet per unit. And that lot is only 35 by 100, where we're 37 and a half. Lot 35, next to that, which is again, right across the street, is a two-family, which is at 2,000 square feet per unit and 40-foot wide. So again, we're within the character of the area. And just to continue, lot 34, which is the six-unit, that is actually less. It's 1,233 square feet per unit because it's on a lot that's only 750 square feet, which is less than ours. And lot 33, the four-family, comes at 1,250 square feet per unit. So we're actually proposing more square feet per unit than some of the other multifamilies in the area. The same with the setbacks. If you look at photograph... Number four, you see that most of the houses are right up against the sidewalk, and we're proposing 4 feet as a setback. So in my opinion, I believe we're within the character of the area.
So would it be fair to say that a good percentage or most of the houses in the area are non-conforming? They do not have conforming structures?
That's correct.
Would you review the variances with regard to the statutory criteria and the C2 aspect?
In my opinion, variances for this application can be granted under the C2 criteria. Generally, the C2 variances are granted where the use is permitted, which is the case here. These uses are permitted. There are five prongs to the C2 criteria. The number one, does the application relate to a specific piece of property? Again, in my opinion, our property, within the 200-foot radius of Florence Avenue, we're the largest property in terms of size. So based on the largest lot size and lot width along Florence Avenue, I believe that makes this a specific piece of property. So that's number one. Number two, the purposes of the municipal land use law need to be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirement. And I believe there are several purposes that are promoted. Number one, the promotion of the general welfare. Right now, I look at this application. It's filling in a gap. You saw the photograph of the existing dwelling with that large side yard. Filling that gap is more in character with the streetscape and neighborhood, in my opinion. Purpose C of the municipal land use law is to provide adequate light, air, and open space, and I believe this application does. Purpose E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities that contribute to the well-being of the neighborhoods, which I believe this application does. And purpose I is to promote a desirable visual environment. I believe these two new houses will provide a better visual environment than the existing house does. As I said before, it has that flat roof, the L shape. The newer house would be more in character with the streetscape. The third prong of the C2 variances, the variances can be granted without substantial detriment. They're probably good. As I said before, the proposed ones would be more in character with the area. In addition, we're providing stormwater management that doesn't exist today, and we're providing sufficient parking that a lot of the houses don't have in the area. The fourth prong of the C2 criteria, the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh the detriment. Again, I believe this is the established character of the area. We're providing stormwater management. We're providing sufficient parking. So I believe the benefits do outweigh the detriments. And number five, the variances will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. Florence Avenue has a mixture of two, three, four, and more units, and I believe that we are consistent with the neighborhood. So based on that, I believe the variances would be granted.
Anything about the construction officials' letter or the consulting engineers' letter that you need to discuss? I believe they just talked about the various...
I believe we can comply with all of their comments.
I have no further questions, Mr. Witness.
I have a question in terms of impervious. Where the cars are actually parked, what type of material is that?
I'm sorry?
Where the cars are parked, parking stalls, what is the material with the cars?
It's going to be asphalt. I mean, that was designed by the architect.
Is there an impervious percentage here that we've exceeded?
Not in your ordinance.
Because most of the lot is covered.
It only covers building coverage, not total impervious coverage.
Not total impervious. There's always a measure of water.
Yes.
Anybody on the board? Mr. Walsh?
A couple of items for the parking. You say the setback from the parking lot to the back properties is 2.3 and 3.2 feet.
Yes.
What is going to prevent a car in space number four from backing out to make the turn to come forward of not going onto the other people's property? It's only 2.3 feet.
Well, the width of the driveway between the stalls, you see here, is 29 feet. That's more than what's really required in a parking lot. The aisle width is usually 20... Normally is 24 feet with cars parked on both sides. 29 feet is more than what's required. So I believe there's sufficient space for a car to back out and make the turn to go out.
Mr. Walsh, are you suggesting fencing?
Fencing or some sort of stop. I've seen this configuration before. No matter what you say, I have seen cars actually go onto the other person's...
A couple of things. There is... I'm sorry, there is curving around the parking lot. So there is a curve there, which would also prevent, apart from going any further. In addition to that, in Mr. Harris's report, he suggests a board-on-board fence around the back of the property, and obviously, we would agree to that also.
And my witness indicated he would comply with all the recommendations that Mr. Harris had made and Mr. DiLorenzo had made. So we obviously are willing for the fence, sir.
Okay. Snow removal.
Yes, sir.
You have a two-foot snowfall. Where is the snow going to go?
That's a good question. I... My background is I was a director of public works for 30 years for a municipality not too far from here. So I'm very familiar with snow removal. And obviously, a two-foot snowfall, you can't pile it anywhere. It has to be hauled down. There's no question about it. You can pile it for a day, but it has to be hauled down. You just don't have the room to keep it there. And that happens in a lot of places. Either that, or you're not going to have four cars parked on that side.
That's my point. I don't want the cloud to just go back and dump it on the property adjacent to it.
Well, absolutely. That's what I said. There's going to be a curb, number one. There's going to be a fence there. And in my professional opinion, obviously, a two-foot snowfall is a lot of snow. It's got to be hauled down. I would never have nothing like that. I've worked it, so I know.
I have another question. In the design of the whole project, why did you decide to deviate from pushing the houses back and not creating a parking lot in the back, creating the rear yards, that the rear neighbors and neighbors around would have a yard? In other words, you created some variance issues because of the way you designed the project. There's no garages, and the houses are right up on the street.
It fulfills... Well, I'll answer that, but I did not design it. I was brought into the project after the subdivision was created and the architect designed it. I was brought in, like I said, from the beginning to design the grading and drainage and then to do the planning. Would I have designed it differently? The fact that the existing house is four foot off the front setback, because the approach here was to add a second floor to that and because the streetscape, it basically is close to the street, I believe the design is appropriate to have the parking in the rear. Because if you push the houses back further, I don't think it would look good to have the parking in the front. Not only that, it'd be more difficult to maneuver, and maybe they'd have to back out onto the street. Florence Avenue, obviously, is a one-way street, and the way it's designed, there's a good sweep to make that turn to go out to the street. And I'd rather see the cars behind the houses where they're getting that.
I have a question about the parking, not the parking in the back, the parking on Florence Avenue. Parking in that section of town is basically at a premium. How many parking spaces are we going to lose on Florence Avenue now with the... If this plan goes through with making the driveway that wide? Are we losing any parking on the street now?
The entire driveway is 20-foot wide, so in my opinion, you lose one space. And you're right. I've been on Florence Avenue many times. I've been working in the adjoining town.
I'm just thinking about what Mr. Walsh said about the winter time. From a police point of view, that's our biggest trouble area when we have snowfall, parking up in that section of town with snow removal. So I'm just wondering...
But that's why we're providing sufficient parking. If I was asking for a parking variance, I'd hesitate. But we're providing sufficient parking on our site. And you're only losing one space on Florence Avenue. I'll take that back. You're not really losing a space because there's a driveway there now. You're just making it 20-foot wide. You may be losing one space or maybe half a space, but we're providing for enough space to handle both houses.
Where does the drainage go? Did anybody do a test on the water level, the water table in that area yet?
Not at this point. That's something I would have to do to satisfy Mr. Harris, you know, at the top of construction.
Speaking of parking, I know this is not for you per se, but I would like to see as a condition that the spots are used for the tenants and not rented privately to outside the...
No objection to that condition.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Certainly expect it to be as you said.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Since what is being proposed or actually for three-bedroom apartments, I would have liked to see more green space because if you're having children, they need it out of someplace.
I believe they're two-bedroom. Three-bedroom.
Three-bed.
I'm sorry?
No, I would have liked to see more green space or just consolidate the green space because someplace for the kids to play.
Well, if I may, there is green space basically all around the property, so this can be all landscaped, you know, to surround the parking lot. There is some green space behind the houses for children. There's some green space in the front also. So there really is. I mean, I understand that the lots aren't that large.
No, and I just also have a comment. On that drawing, on the back of each of the post buildings, we do show two HVAC compressors. So I don't understand what the purpose is of putting HVAC unit in one of the parts I have.
Well, those are the compressors. Those are the compressors. So you have one for each unit. When we talk about the attic, that would be more for ductwork and then air-handling up there. But these are the compressors that are outside, one for each unit. In my own house, I have the compressors outside, but the air-handlers are in the attic and the ductwork. That's standard procedure.
Just two more questions. Mr. Verucci, with regard to the pervious versus impervious, will there be an improvement with regard to stormwater management if this application is approved?
There's no doubt that we're creating a stormwater management system that doesn't exist today.
Second, with regard to the setback, you indicated the setback of the existing structure is 4 feet, approximately 4 feet. Are there setbacks of other homes in the area similar to that? Is it consistent, the setbacks that are proposed?
Yes, and that's what I tried to show in the photographs, especially across the street. They're right up against the back of the sidewalk there, so they're even closer. And I mean, some do vary, but there is, in general, they're consistent along that same 4-foot setback.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to call the public if they have any questions for any of the witnesses?
Yeah. Raymond Vanaro, 59th Hendrick Street. Mr. Verucci, you could actually say that you think the stormwater would be better. We've got a lot that's all covered with grass and lawn. You think by putting 95% impervious coverage on a piece of property that the stormwater is going to be better?
Well, it is in the sense that, right, as I said before, right now, there is no stormwater management.
And what, like runs on the property, your grass absorbs it now?
Well, it doesn't just run on the property. It slopes to the side. It slopes towards the street.
There's grass all around the property.
There is grass. There's no question. There is grass. But again, there is no stormwater management. It soaks into that grass, and if there's too much stormwater, it could go off the neighboring properties. There's no question about that. By having the system in here, we're actually directing it into the drywells, one in the rear, one in the front, and those drywalls will capture all of the stormwater runoff. And in the event it's necessary, there's an overflow after the stream. So it protects all of the adjoining properties.
And you don't even know the water table. I mean, Southern Lake has a very high water table. Some of them live around streams and stuff in there. You might dig down a couple of feet and hit water. So if you put in a drywall, it could worsen the situation.
I don't know. I really don't. I didn't do a test, obviously. I don't think it's 2 feet because then the basement would be flooded. I would defer to my find.
A lot of basements get water when it rains in Southern Lake. I know that.
But again, I would have to defer to my find if this basement gets flooded. You can ask the owner if it's flooded.
Well, that's really important. And in your professional opinion, you actually think by taking a lot that has a conforming use to it and making two non-conforming uses is a better use of the property? You're going to have two lots that are not conforming.
But again, look at the character of the area.
You have three one-families to the side of the house. You pointed out the two and the four family, but there's three families right around next to them.
You're right. There are three one-families, but then three two-families, a three-family, and then across the street, the four, the six, the three, and the two.
I just don't see how taking one performing lot and making two non-performing lots is a better thing. And as far as parking cars 2 feet from the property line? And as far as parking cars, two feet from the property line, you actually think that improves the lot too? Two feet from the property line?
Well, again, we know that Florence Avenue has a lot of cars. We're creating a parking area so that we comply, so we don't exasperate the problem on Florence Avenue.
It looks like an apartment building, you know, eight cars in the backyard. Right now, the people park off the street, so it's like, they don't park any cars on the street. They park all in a nice big lot they have. So they take all those cars and just jam them in behind the house. And in your professional opinion, you think that's a good plan?
I don't think we're jamming them in there. I believe we're creating a.
Well, you're parking on the side lot too close and the back lot too close. That's to me, jamming them in. I mean, if they weren't jammed in, you'd have five feet on the side and five feet in the back. You don't have that.
Again, I did not design the parking lot. I can't make a recommendation where it can be tightened up a little bit to provide the five feet around the perimeter of the back parking lot. We could beat the five. I believe we could beat the five feet.
Don't you have a 29-foot backup if you removed that five feet and had a 24-foot backup?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It eliminates the problem.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We can shrink it side to side, because I have 29 feet there, and I really don't need 29 feet. And as Mr. Walsh asked before, we have an area behind the house for some open space, but I can maybe push that back a little bit to give you the five feet in the back also. So that could be tough. I didn't design it, but I can make the recommendation to make it better as far as the five feet goes.
I think it's important, Mr. Marucci, that you make that recommendation right now and explain what could be done. Certainly, even the backup space, 24 feet is a generous backup space. So if you have 29 feet, you can remove five feet of pavement immediately.
In a parking lot with cars, whether it's residential, commercial, in a parking lot with cars parked on both sides, the aisle width, standard aisle width, and I'll defer to Mr. Harris on it also, is 24 feet. We have 29, so that's four feet that I could shrink the parking lot. And I'm sorry, five feet I could shrink the parking lot, so that will bring it in much further, so we can have a bigger buffer on each side, probably more than five feet.
I would stop just to tell you one thing. When you're in a mall, you also have room to back the tail end of your car, like the K-turn, where you're up against the fence, you really don't have that maneuver. You actually need the extra feet. If you shrink that to 24, how do you job to your car in that sense?
But again, that's what I was going to say. You can also bring it down, close it to the house, and give you the five feet in the rear also, if that's a concern of the board.
Well, I think you would make that recommendation as to what specifically can be done, bringing it in to eliminate the 29 feet and reduce it to 24, and bring it off the rear yard, whatever you can bring it off the rear yard.
I can make the recommendation that will provide the five-foot required buffer around the entire parking lot and eliminate that variance.
I just have a question. If you're going to get rid of some of that grass, the car, if it runs, it's going to have exhaust. And if the kids are in the basement, is it not going to be too close to the house? Does that make sense?
I'm trying to accommodate.
I know, you can't win no matter what.
I'm trying to accommodate and.
I mean, I would think of the occupants of the house and leave it as it is, because you leave your car running, that exhaust is going to go into the house.
Well, remember, the architect already has 2.3 feet. I'm only talking 2.25 feet. I've got 11.7, so I'm not taking that much away to give you the five feet.
Yeah, I mean, that's one house. How much wood do you have to be in that car? The house on the right one?
6.4.
And you want to make it three closer to the house?
It's already 3.2. I need 1.8 feet, so it'll be just about five feet.
Is there anything on that property line, anything that it's close to? I mean, how close is the house next door?
The house in the door?
No, in the back.
Well, the back would be the rear yard.
Right, so would it not make sense to leave it that way? I mean.
I'm trying to accommodate.
Yeah, but I'm trying to make sense that which is profitable, because as you're moving things, you're making other problems.
It just don't fit. It just don't fit. Like I said, you're making one performing lot into two non-performing lots. And in your professional opinion, you think that's a good plan?
Well, when you say one performing lot, it's an oversized lot, and it's an RC zone, so I believe that another alternative could be, this could be a three, in other words, you're probably going to put a three-family over there. So really, we're asking for one more unit. In other words, it's an RC zone, so we're oversized. I'm over 8,000 square feet. I believe you need 2,500.
It's been there for the last 80 years.
I believe you need 2,500 square feet per unit by ordinance. You can have a three-family without any variances.
Yeah, that might be a problem.
So what we're asking for is only one more unit.
Well, the difference is too, you have two structures. My apartment's a little tricky also, because if there was one structure or a three-family, it would conform a lot better.
This is the application that was proposed to me. It's the application I'm proposing to the board.
I have just one further question. Mr. Marucci, Mr. Venero talked about the three-one families adjacent, in addition to all the others around the property. Are the lots on those three-one families potentially smaller than this lot?
Oh, yes. I believe they're 40-foot wide, they're not even 50, they're 40.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DeGarcio.
Yes. My question, Dr. Marucci, I would like to see.
Could you come forward?
Yes, no problem.
I have a question. You said the requirement of town is 2,500 square feet for a one-family, is that a problem?
No, no. I said this is an RC zone.
Yes, go ahead.
And in the RC zone, I don't have it in front of me, but you can have a two-family in an RC zone.
Or what?
If I may, you can have.
Let me answer the question, Mr. DeGarcio.
You can have a two-family. You can have a two-family with only 5,000 square feet.
Right.
We have over 8,000 square feet.
Now, let me ask you a question.
So if I do the math, if I do the math, a two-family at 5,000 square feet means 2,500 square feet per unit, which means on a lot of this size, it's equivalent to a three-family plus.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Simple question. You're in an RC zone. What is the minimum requirement of the lot size to build a multi-family unit in the RC zone? Which of three families?
10,000 square feet.
So you need 100 square feet, I mean, 100 frontage, 100 feet frontage, correct?
10,000 square feet, 100 frontage.
Yes. Now, you're looking to eliminate a conforming use that you could fit a two-family on legally, correct?
I can agree with that.
Okay. And you want to subdivide this, this conforming lot, into two non-conforming lots that do not even allow a one-family on each lot?
It's a conforming lot, however, look at the location of the existing house.
I don't agree with Mr. DeGarcio just said.
What do you mean?
He said you couldn't have two ones on here.
No, I said, I said that's all that would be allowed is two ones. You wouldn't be allowed two twos. The minimum requirement.
Well, that's why we're here for a variance.
For a one-family. The minimum requirement for a one-family is 40 by 100. That's the minimum requirement. You're going to 37 and a half by 100. You don't even meet the requirement for a one-family.
If I may.
Go ahead.
It's also the location of the existing house. The existing house is so close to the side property line that it creates the need for another house because of the side yard. It's the only property on Florence Avenue like this that has a side yard wider than the house that's existing on the property, because it's all the way over to the side. That's what makes it.
But that's pre-existing.
Of course it's pre-existing.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's pre-existing. You can't control pre-existing.
But in terms of.
But to change this, and am I right, it's supposed to be two three-bedrooms for each building? Two threes on the bottom, well, three on the bottom, three on the top, three on the bottom, three on the top?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so you're looking to put 3, 6, 12 bedrooms. Am I correct?
Well, a three-bedroom, a three-bedroom house is normal. That's a normal.
Well, it depends on the size of the lots, too. You're subdividing to put two families where you can't, where technically legally, you can't even put a one-family.
I don't agree with that.
Well, 37 and a half, 40.
What are you saying, the subdivide of lots would not allow for two one-family lots?
Right. You don't have to get variances, just get a one-family.
With regard to two one-family lots, you have more insufficient square footage. You have a slight variance with regard to frontage. So there's plenty of room for two one-families.
If I can just continue.
I'm still on width now.
If I can just respond, yes, they're three-bedroom units, but the size of the units are in proportion. I believe they're no more than 1,100 to 1,200 square feet. They're not huge apartments.
And it's still able to fit three bedrooms? Plus a kitchen, plus a living room?
The architect is here, yes.
All I'm saying is, I don't agree with subdividing a property and making two non-conforming lots that technically, under our law, wouldn't even allow a one-family to be built without coming before the boards.
I believe it's, I believe it's the only property on Florence Avenue that has this type of configuration. The existing house, in my opinion.
How many bedrooms are there now?
You have to ask the owner. I haven't been inside the house.
There's four bedrooms there now.
Four bedrooms there now, and you're replacing with 12 altogether.
But again, part of that house is being removed. The addition is being removed.
Makes no difference. I'm still taking four and replacing it with 12. It's still making it three times what it is, and you're making two lots that don't even allow a one-family to be built on either one.
Mr. DeGarcio, your point is welcome.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
Michael Sheldon, 47th Fledge Street. One bit of information that hasn't been stated explicitly tonight is the density for this project.
The density was specifically stated by the.
No, I didn't hear that. You gave areas, but just so it's correct on the record, this property is 8,250 square feet. I believe that was the testimony. So it's about 0.189 acres. Currently, you have one family here with a density of about 5.6. You're trying to put two two-family homes on this property, which increases the density to well over 21 units per acre.
There is a provision in the municipal land use law that for single two-family dwellings, whether it's a subdivision or not, density is not a factor. That's why it wasn't a variance in this case. That's the municipal land use law. That's not my law. Density is not an issue.
But the township, the township has existing ordinances where it's 12 families per acre.
That's for developing multifamily on a larger piece of property. But the municipal land use law is specific with single two-family houses, even with a subdivision, density is not an issue.
You also said that each of these units has approximately 1,100 square feet of space with three bedrooms. Now, even if you just had one person, it stands to reason that you're going to have at least four people living in each of these units with three bedrooms. 1,100 feet, with four people, you're dealing with less than 300 square feet per resident. Now, I'm positive that a few years ago, the town council, and I think it was actually Councilman Kennedy, who introduced an ordinance requiring that all double structures had to have at least 400 or 450 square feet per occupant in order for them to be suitable for a human habitation. You're going to.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's such an ordinance.
There is, there is. I'm absolutely certain.
I'd like to have that called to my attention. I love familiar.
That doesn't supersede the uniform construction code when the company permits. You're talking about.
Hey, guys, in this video. We're talking about. Why you're belly. Hey, guys, in this video. We're talking about. Hey, guys, in this video. We're talking about. Why you're belly.
Yeah, that doesn't apply to this.
Why doesn't it apply?
Because this is new construction. You're talking about stuff that's already existing. You're talking about the property maintenance code.
When Councilman Kennedy introduced this, this was to stop what was happening, I believe, in the Silver Lake area. There were some structures identified as essentially becoming boarding homes. There were a number of homes identified throughout the township where you had single-family, two-family houses suddenly having eight, 10, 12 adults.
You're talking about overcrowding.
Yeah, overcrowding. So he introduced this ordinance to make sure that all double homes.
That's on existing houses. You're talking about, that's what I just told you. It's a property maintenance thing. It wouldn't apply to this. This is becoming a new construction, so it doesn't need the building codes.
But doesn't that?
No, they can't supersede the state.
It's a local ordinance. This is something that the council is imposing on all structures in the township. You have to have a minimum amount of square footage in a home in order for it to.
First thing is, you have to know how many people are occupying before that could possibly apply, if there was such an item.
There are three bedrooms.
Right, they have to meet a certain.
That doesn't matter.
They have to meet a certain square footage for each bedroom.
It doesn't come into play right now. Right now, we have to restrict looking at the municipal land use law. That's right now for our purposes, we're planning for it, it does not apply.
Well, just my feeling, this is yet another Sardine effect that's trying to be achieved here in Bubba. I also just want to make one other comment. I really detest the argument that's made that because there are other structures in the area that have a much greater density. I think the testimony was that there were some houses across from this property that had three, four, five, or six units in them, that somehow that validates this over-density project. But one thing that's not pointed out is that those existing structures were probably built before 1955, when the township introduced its first zoning ordinances. If those projects were coming before us now, they wouldn't be approved. So this is really a very disingenuous argument, and I think it insults the intelligence of both planning board and zoning board members when we hear this argument made. So I just wanted to say that much for the record. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think that the project is a little over ambitious.
I agree with this. I have an opportunity to sum up. Do you want to deliberate?
Yeah, I'll make my statement.
Okay.
I just think that the project is a little over ambitious. I have a problem with, I think the biggest thing I have a problem with is that you have a conforming lot, and you're subdividing it, again, to make two non-conforming lots, and then asking for a bunch of variances to put these two-family houses in. There's a lot of other ways that that could have been achieved without asking so much. I have to agree that, you know, and if we allow this, then we have to allow that all over the township. So when I look at this map, what's to stop anybody from saying, I'm going to knock my house down, split my lot, have a few houses on it? Nothing would set the precedent.
In all fairness.
I know each application is not to a marriage, but again, this is.
But in all fairness, Mr. Chairman, most of the lots on Florence aren't wide enough to do that.
Well, neither is this when you subdivide.
Well, no, no. What I'm saying is, we're 75-foot width, where most of the lots are 35, 40, maybe 50.
And it might be a hardship case if all he had was 37 feet.
I know, but what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, the reason we're able to do this, because we have the 75 feet. If somebody wanted to knock down their house on a 40-foot lot or 50-foot wide lot, they couldn't do what we're trying to do. I mean, that's what planning is all about, and that's.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes, sir.
Okay, first thing I'd like to address, Mr. Sheldon's argument that he said, my witness is ingenuous. First thing is, the law is very clear that you can't just change the zoning and have everything left as it was. If you had a requirement to have a 50-foot lot, and there's a couple of vacant 50-foot lots that remain, and you decide you're going to change the ordinance to be a 100-foot lot, you can't deprive that person the opportunity to build on that lot. So the argument that what exists is important is not an ingenuous argument. It's a legitimate argument, and the case law supports that. Now, with regard to this application, one of the benefits, we're getting rid of an un-conforming building. It's an odd-shaped building, it doesn't look good at all. We're trying to put two aesthetically pleasing properties on there. The size of other properties in the area is important to this application. We are the largest lot. And to say we should have to leave a one family in this condition on that lot is not a proper decision. The use itself as a two-family is permitted. This is a multi-family zone. My client, of course, is willing to change the macadam and put a five-foot perimeter around completely. We're willing to put the fence in that's been recommended by Mr. Harris. There is a common driveway that's proposed here. It is very beneficial in that anybody pulling out of here can pull out forward. With regard to snow removal or anything of that nature, this property, if approved, will have more parking than any property in the area. So snow removal should certainly not be an issue with this application. The drywells, they're going to improve the drainage. I understand that Mr. Venero says there's a lot of green area and he's obviously correct, a lot of green area on there now. But the goal of any application to stormwater management requirements is to reduce the number of, the amount of water that's going to come off there. And my engineer says he can reduce it. The, you're filling in a gap area, as was pointed out by my planner. The area is odd because you've got this house in the corner of the lot and you're going to have an empty piece of property. The parking is compliant and very good. It's a C2 application, the benefits outweigh the detriment. And my planner clearly went over the benefits. The square foot per unit is much less than that in the area. He reviewed what had twelve hundred square feet, what had thirteen hundred square feet. We have twenty-one hundred square feet. Again, it's the very largest parcel in the area. Now, there were three people who spoke against this. Obviously, Mr. Venero spoke eloquently and lives in the neighborhood. Mr. Del Gershaw, very knowledgeable man, but he doesn't live in this neighborhood. He's the chairman of the zoning board. He comes to all the meetings and he marks the board's input. I've already discussed what Mr. Sheldon had to say. So really, the objector here in this case, and I respect that gentleman, is Mr. Venero. The other two gentlemen don't live in the area. They have their theories about what should or should not be. But I think the testimony of my planner has been excellent with regard to why this application should be approved and I thank the board for their time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon.
Thank you.
Yes, is anybody want to make a motion to move forward on this application?
I'll make a motion to move forward on this application. Mr. Conti?
I would really rather take a recess.
What, you were more voting to approve or turn it down? Can't hear.
Well, we're about to vote on that now.
They couldn't hear the votes.
I'm serious, we made a motion, there was a motion made to approve. I was moving for a vote, there was a second motion.
She made a motion to approve.
And Corrine is calling the roll. Corrine?
Mr. Conti?
No.
Ms. Nogarato?
Yes.
Mr. Vanda?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
No.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
Mr. Cazarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
No.
Mr. Sinabria?
No.
Mr. Walsh?
No.
No.
Motion fails five to four, I believe.
Yes.
I would recommend one thing. I think that the property deserves development. I just think it's a little over ambitious. I would love to see them come back with something that conforms a little better and makes a little bit more sense. I just think it was a little over ambitious personally.
Thank you, the board for its time and attention.